Again, this tool, this item tool is open for public comment. The duty's upon to ask councilmen and Bunch to share their supporting reasons for this item with us. I believe having such information is necessary, as the council expects to hear relevant testimony regarding that this evening. If you wait until the council begins this discussion, then the public has denied the opportunity to respond to the reasoning behind the motion. As you move from council discussion to the way of our motion. Thank you.
All the public is still open. Any one wish to speak? The council will proceed. Town manager report? Town manager?
I was actually going to ask the county to give a brief update on the road situation on the road. And he stepped out to him, he's back, he's been having...
Thank you. All the public's still open, does anyone wish to speak? Council's going to proceed. The consent agenda, send your right of approval November 1st, 2014, Reg. Council, 80 minutes. Motion will be...
Second.
Move to second, although it's in favor of the city by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Council is going to proceed to the first of two general agenda items, and that's council discussion and second reading of ordinance view 2014-12, amending the official town, giving zoning map by changing the underlying zoning parcel 211-46-V39, 211-46-040C, 211-46-041A, and 211-46-25E. Describe exhibit 1 and effect of exhibit 2 from desert rule DR43 to a general commercial GT zone. The subject parcels are located at the northwest corner of Cave Creek Road and Olson Road, AC-14-02E.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that I can add much, much of what you just stated, but this is the second reading, and we have to answer any questions of council this time.
Questions from council? Anything else from planning? Okay, public comment, public hearing, actually, on agenda item number one, Carrie?
I have no speakers, Mayor, I can remember all.
Anyone wish to speak? I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion, then. Council, invite, thank you.
Luke, give second reading to ordinance 2014-12, and orders the mayor and the town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maryland, Arizona, paying the official town, cave creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning parcel 211-46-039, 211-46-040C, 211-46-041A, and 211-46-025E. Describe exhibit 1 and effect of exhibit 2. From desert rule DR43 to the general commercial zone, the subject parcels located the northwest corner of Cave Creek Road and Olson Road.
Second. Motion has been made and second, councilman Bunch?
I think we went over this last time, and I don't know how it's going to go, but I support it.
Councilman McGuire, ready, second.
Yeah, I think this is an important part of moving forward, Cave Creek without economic development, and the opportunities that this makes for us, for the strong economic benefits for the town.
Anything else from council on this? Councilman Spitzer?
I didn't hear anybody saying anything about any changes from this, the site plan and whatnot from last meeting. What was presented last meeting was not what was presented as when the original general plan amendment was put through years ago. It was presented back then as a benefit to local residents in that area. What we got now was a lot line to lot line parking lot. I agree with the minority of the planning mission. The developer of this land has basically said, let's maximize everything and not deal with whatever the town wants in terms of its normal trails or easements across the front for streetscapes or whatever. They basically said, we're just going to do what we can to maximize it.
I'm going to connect to councilman Durkin.
I wasn't in favor of this at the first meeting, and I'm not going to support it this time. It's regardless of what's drawn on the, on the depiction of what could go into this property, all this does is rezone it to general commercial. It doesn't ensure that tractor supply is going to come there, it doesn't ensure that there's going to be any protection setbacks or whatever associated protecting the residents that are near this from the impact of development. And, and we, we were very careful, I think, in the, in what was done along the north side of Carefree Highway to ensure some protection of the residents, the residential residents on the north side of the special area plan, by virtue of the fact that we adopted a specific plan with restricted requirements and made it a commercial buffer. None of those protections are in place here. And this council, I, gentlemen, I think we need to be mindful of our responsibility to not address the financial woes of the town by placing the burden of those woes largely on the backs of a small subset of the people. We can't solve the town's problems on the backs of just a few residents. When we make decisions about rezoning, we have to be very, very mindful of the, the large impact that has had, those decisions can have on, and will have, in this case, on a very small number of, of the folks in town. That's all I have to say.
Anything else from council? Councilman Monacano?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Durkin, if you think your first time to this situation, I would have to agree with. This is a zoning issue, and if it passes, it will be general commercial. Now, with regard to setbacks and architecture and disturbance and all of those issues are really not part of this decision right now. The site plan is going to come back to the commission, and the commission is going to ask and request and a whole bunch of stuff, okay? But the motion now is zoning, okay? And I think that's the only thing we consider, is zoning. Now, would this be better for you if it was commercial buffer? What would be the difference? Or are you suggesting no commercial at all?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting, I'm sorry, give, or give...
My change of care.
I'm suggesting that commercial buffer would be more appropriate, and here's my reasoning, okay? Once this becomes general commercial, other than simply wanting something, the planning commission and the council has very little leeway in justifiably refusing a developer the setbacks associated with general commercial. The developer comes in here and proposes a development that meets the guidelines of general commercial, okay? There's, that's what's going to happen on that piece of property. Now is the time, when considering rezoning, to ensure that future actions, okay, provide the, the benefits of setbacks and such to the residents that are, that are affected by development in this area. To simply say to ourselves, well, it's going to come back to council, and it's going to come back to the planning and zoning, doesn't guarantee there's going to be any protection, okay? General commercial has a completely different set of guidelines, architectural setbacks and everything else than does commercial buffer. So the entity, so, so that long response is, is a response to the suggestion that somehow we're going to mitigate the effects of general commercial by appropriately avoiding some development that might be proposed there down the road. We can't do that, okay? Realistically, we can't do that, and, and the second point is, now's the time to make sure that we look to the future and do, and develop so that we protect the residents next to that development. But, but I don't hear the substantial difference between general commercial and commercial buffer. Let's ask the director of planning, Mr. Cordwell, what the setback differences are between general commercial and commercial buffer. And I'll poison the well a little bit here, and ask him to explain why we use commercial buffer instead of general commercial in the special area plan along Carefree Highway.
Councilman Durkin, councilman Monacano, members of council, actually, the issue had less to do with setbacks than the allowed uses within each general commercial, if you remember when I tortured you reading the allowed uses in the specific area plan. There are about 24 uses that are allowed of general commercial, but would not be allowed in commercial buffer. The idea of having commercial buffer on the north side, that it would provide an actual buffer to those residences, it would rule out things like auto sales, auto-related uses, drive-through facilities, although the council addressed that in SAP, munitions, fireworks, medical, or one. But it had more to do with uses than, than setbacks, right?
What are the setback differences?
I don't know off the top of my head, I wonder if my words fit your like.
I'll be willing to bet they're a lot more protective, red. I can't recall what they are.
If you like it, put up my words.
Well, we're probably going to be on it, on this subject, long enough for you to get them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Monacano, do you still have the floor and/or councilman Durkin?
I'll, I'll pass for the moment, Mayor. I agree with councilman Durkin, that which is, or councilman Monacano, that which is before council is a zoning, that, that are nothing else before council. If our guidelines for general commercial are, need to be relooked at, well, then that's, that's a totally different set of questions and different process. But that, this, this particular agenda item is a request for rezoning, all these other things you're talking about, setbacks and things like that, come up later in our process. Architectural guidelines, we, that's a whole separate discussion, which has actually come before council in years past, but has never gotten the blessing of council to get into how something should look. And so we get back to that which is before council, this council, which should rezone this to general commercial or not. That's the only thing which is before this. And that's all I'm talking about, Mr. Mayor? But... Having setbacks and all the rest of what may go there, that's, that, that is not before council. I do disagree with some matters to what council can and cannot do, as when a project starts to come through the process. Maybe I should have said will and will not do. I think it's unlikely that, that should a developer come before a council with a plan that had the, the, the guidelines of general commercial and disrezone general commercial, that there would be any hesitation on council's part to approve that. And, and further to my point, and I, and I have to disagree, I, I don't disagree that certainly this is strictly a zoning issue right now. My point is, that if we tonight decide to rezone this general commercial, the future impact on the residents next to this will be larger, and I don't think anyone can, can argue with that, will be potentially much more significant in terms of what we go next door, or, than were we not to rezone this, general commercial tonight, and in the, in the, period, that's all that need be said. If we don't rezone it, the potential future impact on the residences would, would be mitigated. Now, certainly this will come back in the future to council, and at that time, I think that a rezoning to a different category would strike a proper balance between giving Carefree sources of revenue that it needs and minimizing the impact on the residents that presently live next to this subject property. I don't think there's any argument about that either. And, and it's only in that context, gentlemen, that I think the distinction between the setbacks and the allowed uses between general commercial and any other zoning, commercial zoning category is germane to the question presently before us tonight, because of the future impact on the residents. Have I made that clear, or is there still some confusion as to why I'm discussing the future impact of the decision tonight between the requested zoning and whatever future zoning options might be presented to council? Is that clear? I, I think I understand, I, I don't want to make the assumption that I understand. You're, I, I believe what you're saying is, commercial buffer is a less impact upon the majority of citizenry than say, general commercial. Which would mean that any time we zone something general commercial, we're going to encounter this problem, so we get back to a basic question, do you want to zone a general commercial or not? That's the only thing that is before it. Excuse me a second. Thank you. The setback distances are the same. Describe the...
The book regulations for all three commercial categories are the same.
So the only distinction between...
The uses.
The uses allowed. Well, then I was mistaken about the setbacks, but the uses are different. Doesn't change my position, but, thank you. All right, I'm going to end this. For now.
Councilman Monacano?
And I have a question for councilman Durkin. Have you had any discussions with the people in that area? Do you have any input from them with regard to their feelings about their neighborhood to this particular zoning potential zoning?
Yes, I was, I was thanked by one resident after the first meeting, and she was in favor of not. And, anyway, she thanked me for voting against it. Had a conversation with one other couple who's in the area that also voted against it, and that, that, that's the extent of the conversation besides that with residents. Thank you.
Any, councilman, invite?
One for legal, or is what we're discussing here not conditional zoning, or conditional reasoning, which is something in the back of my mind, as, as described on the other end of the diocese, is that not kind of what we're pushing up against?
We are members of the council, my understanding is no particular straight building argument, but Mr. Cordwell probably has a more detailed understanding, but I think that was not, this was not a conditional, we can just straight move on to certain issues.
Yeah, but what's being described, we're, we're caring what shows up there once we, once we do it. It sounds like they're looking for a, for a rezoning and a, and a plan set in concrete at the same time, which, which would be conditional, which is, I think...
Mayor, I'm wondering if I might, usually conditional zoning is certain uses that require a use permit. I think sometimes when we, when the council gets zoning, press our site plan, then you look at arrangement of buildings and setbacks and things like that. But the conditional usually refers to particular uses that require a conditional use, and sometimes the approval of a particular project has the condition attached to it.
If I may. The Alpin is asking for general commercial zoning, they then notified by SAP that the uses that were presented by them will require a special use permit, additional site plan when they come back through.
Thank you.
Councilman Monacano?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one for, follow-up, councilman Durkin. If this were not to be rezoned general commercial, what would you have in mind for these particular parcels? To have them remain as they are, or a special area plan, commercial buffer, or even mixed residential?
My preference would be that they be rezoned to commercial buffer.
Carrie, go one please. Unless there's something else from council?
Councilman Durkin?
No.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Spitzer?
No.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Monacano?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, by vote of four to two, the motion is passed. Under the second and last of the... That's what I essentially always like. The second and last item of this evening is council discussion and first reading of ordinance ZR 2014-11, amending the town code of the town of Cave Creek, Chapter 33, boards and commissions, Section 33.02, planning commission membership. This is being brought to the council, by councilman Bunch. Councilman Bunch, I'm going to give you a little leeway here, generally when a council person brings something to the agenda, the basic statement is, I want to bring this to the council's consideration, period, and then we go into the public comment. Without getting into that you are for or against something, can you give a brief description as to why you are bringing this before the council?
Yes. Going back seven or eight years ago, we had five members in the, in the planning department, there were, there were five people in there, there was Ian, of course, there was Larry Sarr, there was Bambi, there was Marie, and Luke was in there as well. We had five people. Now currently, I think that the allocation is, is three and a half, is that correct, Ian? You've got, you've got you, Bambi, Luke, and Marie, half time. Three and three and one?
Half of Marie.
Half of Marie, yeah, okay. Which is better than a lot, half of a lot of people. The issue back then was with seven people, we were, we were fairly busy at the time with the development. And there was an enormous amount of time spent with the, the staff and trying to figure out answers to the questions that the, that the planning commissioners had. In my mind, with now having three and a half people, one and a half less people in that department, and more things coming forward, it would seem to me that cutting the, cutting the number back could possibly be beneficial to, to staff to be able to get their, get their, their normal work done, which is not explaining things to people. I bring this to council because I can't talk to three other people and find out if it's okay with them or not, because that would be a breach of the meeting law. Therefore, the only way I have to, to broach this subject is in a public forum just like this, and where you folks can stand up and shoot at, and, and, believe me, either way it goes, I don't much, I, you know, I think it's a good idea, if it fails, I'm okay with that, and we're off the way and do something different. But that's, that's the, the main reason, you folks will, will think that there's a political reason behind this. There is not. I had it on the agenda, two or three months ago, before we filled the last temporary position, and it looked to me like at that point in time, it would have been beneficial, or not beneficial, but, but political. As it stands now, the terms are up, December 31st, the three seats. We would, we would fill one then, for this to pass. And that's all I've got to say, so folks, come on, let me feel the love.
We're going to go to, thank you, councilman, we're going to go to public comments.
Ted Bryda?
Mayor, council members, when I saw this on the agenda, it was item number three, I was kind of taken back. And the reason I was taken back is that there was nothing said about it in the past, and at the same time, there was no reasons given for the requested change. And that always bothers me when reasons aren't there. In view of this, I did some research in the ARS statutes in Chapter 9, which indicated that when the town was incorporated, if the population is greater than 1,500 people, you would have seven council members. And also, another section, in Section 9 says, that additionally pointed out that the planning commission will inform or require a minimum of five members, and a minimum is not always the best way. It's my opinion that when the town code for Cave Creek was developed for a corporation, members involved, the planning commission should have seven members, just like the council, so they could represent the citizens of Cave Creek with different interests from various areas of the town. For over 25 years, I believe the planning commission has had seven members, which allow for better and broader representation in planning and zoning matters than just five. This foresight is always allowed, the recommendations to the council, would you best represent the citizens, the needs of all the citizens of the town, whether they are horse people, farmers, professional, or others? And we have always had a minimum of five members present at the council, at these meetings, even though we had seven. Now, doing, looking at this, should you change to five, you would take the risk of having only three members, and those three members would not represent the people in the town. So I say to you, please, do not vote yes on this, turn it down, and continue the way you are, until you come up with something better to ensure that the people in the town are being represented for the best interests of Cave Creek and the town. Thank you.
Sure, I'm coming. Very nicely said, Mr. Bryda. I thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to show a chronicle on my resident of Cave Creek for 11 years, and I have probably been to more meetings in the last six months than I even care to think about, more than when my corporate world is telling the truth. I really respectfully disagree with this suggestion to take it from seven to five. I believe that we are very well represented with seven people on the planning commissions. I've been to more planning commission, planning and zoning commission meetings than I have council meetings, actually, because it always brings up the details of the project. So when you do get to a council meeting, I'm hoping that it helps you do your job better, unless you want more work, maybe that's one of the reasons, I don't know, maybe you want more details in your own job, but I believe that the planning and zoning commission can certainly help you, and should be, I believe we can work on more respect between the council and the planning and zoning. I was doing a little research, Carefree has seven members, Camp Verde has seven members, and Wiganburg, Wiganburg has seven members, and I just love their structure. They actually require a council member to attend each and every commission or board that they have. So let's say there's a planning and zoning, there's a trails, they're, they're a particular situation, they have trails, and you have people from the community that are on the trail commission, so, and then they also have one council member. Now, I know you have a lot of meetings and you have other lives, however, I think that's a great idea, I think it would bridge the gap between the planning and zoning and the council folks. They're also proposing to have a use commission, which I know with our tenure plan coming up, so, all in all, my thoughts and feelings are that we, we make things smoother, more collaborative, and if there are too many people asking too many questions, then let's attack that issue with staff, and maybe streamline the people on the planning and zoning commission, and take it to one person, ask multiple questions of the staff. Staff's very busy, I understand that, but I don't think we should change the structure for staff purpose. Let's change the problem and fix the problem and move forward. I think that's all, and I thank you for listening, and I urge you to vote no.
Thank you.
Mayor Alderson?
Good evening, council, Mayor. I'm speaking with two hats tonight, both as a private citizen and as a chair of the government. I'm speaking with two hats tonight, both as a private citizen and as the chair of the planning commission. And I would like to set aside all the political correctness that invades our speech and tell you that I think reducing the representation from the general public from seven to five is really nothing short of irresponsible. I, I listened very closely to what Councilman Durkin spoke to this evening, and it, it was so obvious that the more heads that are involved in looking at the development of this town, the better the process will be. When you start reducing the numbers, you, you invite clique-ish concentrations. So I, with all due respect to Councilman Bunch, I think it's a terrible idea, and I would like to see the whole idea of reducing the commission from seven to five thrown out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, council members, I'll reiterate that some people have said five votes compound only three commissioners being heard by the council. Hardly what I would call was citizen representation. If too many members of the commission are coming into town and asking questions, I would, it almost guarantee that more council members are also going to be there, more than commission members. So where, where are the savings? Maybe we only have to produce five packets instead of seven, and maybe transcription of the minutes will be a little shorter. Then I come down and said, if this motion really has merit, then it would seem reasonable to ask the council to also adopt this for themselves. Perhaps Councilman Bunch and another councilman who support this out of efficiency, but a town government would resign in order to bring these efficiencies to life. And in closing, one cannot ignore how the citizens' speculation that politics is at play here regarding the composition and effectiveness of the planning commission. It wasn't long ago that the former town manager and some members of this council, of the council, not this council, of the council at that time, tried to neuter the commission's role. You can recall these. It made them smaller, saying any, any item, a project being before the commission, if it wasn't resolved in sixty days, automatically would be sent to the council. Those are not, those were not good for Cave Creek then, and this is not good for Cave Creek now. I urge you to vote no.
Carrie, back in the tribe.
Bill Allen?
Bill Allen. For eleven years, I served on the planning and zoning commission. Every single meeting that we had during that period of time, I spent a minimum, minimum of twenty hours prior to the meeting, going over everything in detail. The water, the requirements of the planning and zoning, everything else, the retention of water on site, there wasn't anything that we didn't cover in detail in those meetings. We had seven members. I appreciated the response that I got from each and every individual member of the planning commission at that point in time, because it was large enough to give us a diverse opinion, it was small enough at the same time to talk between ourselves in the commission meetings and actually make some well-founded decisions. I realize that if you don't have the full commission or the full, in my case, the, our full water planning committee in place, we have problems. The problem being, some people don't come. There is a way to resolve that, both for the, the water planning commission as well as the planning commission. And that is, the council needs to do something that says essentially, if you miss three meetings and you don't have a damn good extent of exist responsibility answer to what in the fine you were not there, then you're out. Now, it doesn't take much to call and say, yeah, I can't come tonight because of this. But in, in the case of both commissions, if they're not people who are stepping up and doing their job, then they shouldn't be released. And I would hope that the, the council would take that into consideration and add something both to the water planning committee and to the planning commission in terms of the membership responsibilities. But I think it would be a mistake, or in, in sincere recognition of your efforts. I, I appreciate that, but I think it would be a mistake. And I would hope that the council would vote no on this, if it did actually. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Other speaker?
Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Benucci?
Carrie, do you need me to do this? No, I, good evening, councilman. This is Sarah Benucci, and I'm a resident of Cave Creek for almost twenty years. In those twenty years, I have sat through hundreds of planning meetings and many more council meetings. Since the last election, I have missed only one planning commission meeting. That is because it has been enormously enriching to listen to this particular group of councilmen, I'm sorry, commissioners, and to listen to the dialogue and the back and forth and the discussion of things that even I have not heard of is, is just very uplifting, and it is something that should be available to all citizens who care to come. I think the number of people you have, the seven commissioners provide a wonderful balance in, in the give and take that is required to explore very complicated issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
David Smith, Cave Creek citizen. I've expressed my philosophy about what organizations like the planning commission, Water Advisor Committee, and other committees are supposed to do, and that is, we are supposed to vet proposals, applications, what have you, in a manner which enables subsequently the council to have the best possible information when they make their decision. What's coming this year is a revamping of the general plan. My personal feeling is, the more input you have to that, the better the outcome will Councilman Bunch mentioned that sometimes there are too many questions. My own feeling is, questions are good, because if, if there is a question, then it deserves an answer. And if the planning commission doesn't have a substantial, a reasonable number of people on it, my, my feeling is seven is reasonable, you're not going to have as many questions, you're not going to get as many answers, and you're not going to get as good a final product. One of the things that having seven people on the commission does is it enables the commission to have differing sets of knowledge, differing expertise, and that all brings a better product at the end. And since I feel that what the commission does is a service to the council and to the town and to the citizens by enabling their input, which can then be consolidated and presented to the council for the final decision, I, I would strongly suggest voting against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Art Robertson, resident of Cave Creek. For thirty years, I represented the city of San Diego in a number of board meetings. And I was on both sides of the fence, voting for and voting against. The public would come and montabell the high rise of the middle of Garden, and give us reasons why and so forth, and we'd discuss them all. We had eleven members on board, and even with that number, and the number of issues that we dealt with, we found that the number of complaints went down because everyone had a different thought to bring to the council. And they would be able to settle issues that someone else may not have thought of. With that idea, it's really more better, just five, four, three, seven is the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bunch. Public comment is still open. Does anyone else wish to speak before I bring this to council? Okay, do you want to vote, yeah, Councilman Bunch?
Yeah, I wonder if I get a new name that says Bob Coby.
Your motion, council.
Yeah, I know, let's just, let's just do it and talk about it a little bit. Move to give first reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash eleven, or accordance of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek town code, chapter thirty-three, boards and commissions, section thirty-three dot zero-two, planning commission membership.
Second. Motion made in the second. Councilman Bunch?
Well, I just kind of wondered what everybody thought, and it was the only way I could find out, and I still think it's a good idea, so I'm still going to support my motion, but y'all will have to.
I certainly want to hear council's discussion. Councilman Durkin, you had a second.
Oh, thank you. I, I applaud your well-intended, you know, motion here by Councilman Bunch, and I applaud you for standing up like a man and taking on the shit. But I, I have to say, I, I think Cave Creek, the diversity of opinions in Cave Creek deserves a seven-member planning commission. So I'm not being supportive, but I had something to do with it.
Thank you for the second, I really appreciate that.
Councilman McGuire?
I want to thank the citizens for bringing forward to the council substantial information. With all due respect to Councilman Bunch, whom I, I do love, you may wonder at times, and so do I. However, the preponderance, virtually all of the truly important evidences, what I've heard tonight from the people in front of us, and I listen very carefully, and I thank you for the substantial input, which came almost exclusively from those sitting in front of us.
Councilman Malakino?
Thank you, Mayor. I may be a little biased, having served on the planning commission for a number of years. I valued the recommendations of the commission then, and I value them today. I think seven folks and asking questions, offering opinions, if you read the minutes, the minutes are very helpful. You get the back and forth, and, okay, some of the questions aren't the best, and every once in a while, I'll come across something, hey, I didn't think of that. But I think that's very valuable, and the broad views of seven citizens, I think, is valuable to council.
Councilman Spitzer?
Yeah, it's a big target.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a big target. Artree and Rife and Spitzer, God, whatever.
In the last bunch of years, Cave Creek has grown, number of residents, number of acres, number of projects getting bigger, water systems getting bigger, the problems are getting bigger, roads problems are getting bigger. Frankly, reducing the number would disenfranchise so many more portions of the town, so many groups of, of residents. Frankly, I, I would believe that we should increase the number, rather than decrease five thousand, nine or eleven. Given that half of them could be gone, or almost half of them could be gone, depending upon five to make the decision for five thousand, and they, they feed us all of this information that frankly, we don't have the depth of knowledge of all the, the experts that are on there, that, that we as a council, it would just wouldn't occur to us.
Thank you for that, thank you, Charlie, I appreciate that. Any conclusion, Councilman Bunch?
Well, it looks like I'm sitting up here with a target on myself. Like I said, it was the only way to get here without breaking open meeting law, and I, I sit, I sit corrected. I think that Dr. Allen's comments pursuant to attendance are, are rather pointed, and I, I think maybe we might look at that later on. If, if you care enough to take the seat, don't show up, then you ought not be on, on the, on the thing. So having said that, I don't think I'm going to support my own darn motion.
Could I make a suggestion of future?
Well, you may be saying, yeah, I guess you can, Mayor, is that all right with you?
Well, since you were so proactive here and, you know, took on the, took on the charge, tilted at the windmill and got knocked off your horse, maybe take, take up the challenge of casting a future agenda item that might address Dr. Allen's.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a good plan, and additionally, we could maybe all of us, council and commission, get rendered succinct with our questions, so we're not spending an awful lot of, an hour and a half of staff time. We don't need, we don't need, you know, the answer is, you can't do that legally. Then trying to figure out a way around it's probably not a real good idea.
Councilman Malakino?
Maybe a suggestion to avoid the fact that Councilman Bunch's motion would be downed in place. Maybe if we continued this to a date uncertain. And it just...
Let's, let's council vote on it tonight, okay? Go ahead and bring something back if there's something you think...
If, if, if I were a betting man, I know the way I would be betting on the outcome of this particular agenda item tonight, but I, I would not want the, the, the good aspect about this particular item to, to go unnoticed. And that is, you have a mayor that will bring anything before the community and to the council, and I would not want it to go unnoticed, because the message is, the council does not discuss items unlawfully. We discuss them in public, and something like this may stir up some of, some emotions in the community, and that's good. So I want you to see the good aspect. When, when I got involved in town government here, they, they made me the chair of what was then the environmental commission, and it was a seven-member commission. And I don't think there's anyone here in the audience that remembers that commission. If Grace Smith were here, she would remember. And it, it took upon the, the parks, the trails, and everything else. It eventually got folded into what is the planning and zoning commission, because that existed back then, too. But the purpose is, the purpose that it served, and the purpose to me that seven-member P&amp;Z commissions, or water commissions, or seven-member council serve, is to get as many people involved in the government as possible. the government as possible. The more people involved in government, even at this small level, the municipal level of five thousand citizens, I think makes for a better community. The danger, and the danger exists with a council, as it does with the P and Z commission, is that it becomes weighted one way or the other. It could be argued that the New River Road community is overly represented by Councilwoman Bunch and myself. It could have really been argued that we were overly represented, when it was Councilwoman Bunch being Councilwoman Esser, that there was too many represented, even though we were of a different mindset. That's where you find your dangers in commissions, and it's not so much in the numbers, it's in the mindset. That is what can make a commission, or a council, lopsided. I'm not allowed to go to P and Z missions, commission meetings, you're all familiar with the open meeting law, or there's another one, undue influence, the mayor should not show up at P and Z, because the mere presence of a mayor at a commission meeting can be a signal to the commissioners that the mayor has interest in a certain agenda item, and prejudice of vote, so you never see me. So I read your minutes and see how you think, and if I have a question, I call you on the phone. So I'm going to call for the vote, and again, if I were a betting man, I think I know which way this is going to go. Shall we start off with a no, Carrie?
Councilwoman McGuire?
Surprised, no.
Councilwoman Spitzer?
No.
Councilwoman Bunch?
I may not be a smart man, but I'm smart enough to say no.
Councilwoman McGwire?
No.
Councilwoman Durkin?
A very gentle no.
I go along with the gentility of Councilwoman Durkin, and then a no. Sixty, no, the motion, Carrie. And one thing I did hear mentioned, because council, as well as commissioners interface with staffers, if you need to see a staff member, do what the council does with the town manager, he knows what's at work, if I have any more time. I want to give you a little preview, Carrie, we've got a meeting coming up on the third...
First, December first.
Oh, my birthday, oh, wow, okay, we will remember that. Can you give the citizens here a little, I know you don't have your notes in front of you, a little idea of what is coming up on the first?
Specific area plan?
Just the titles. Okay. So that's it, one item?
We have two items, the utilities on purchasing, we have appointment to the Planning Commission, appointments to the Board of Adjustment, and a case from the Planning Department.
And the town manager wrote these...
Trails, trails.
Ah, yeah, I was going to say, yes, yeah. I encourage you to leave behind for that meeting, and follow in our trails. Do you have a road report for next meeting, because we're way off agenda here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, again, the best of thanks, giving holiday to everyone. Motion to adjourn, council. So, thank you.